Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Port Clinton City Council of October 22nd, 2013. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and a moment of silence for our men and women. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. In this hour of incantation, deliver us from evil, from the kingdom of power and glory forever. Amen. Thank you. The board please call the roll. Mark Kappeler?
Present.
Ron Ackerman?
Present.
Deborah Benko?
Present.
Kathy Mel?
Present.
Mike Snyder?
Excused.
Nicole DeFrias?
Present.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Thank you. Um, you have no minutes tonight. The board has had a problem with her thumb drive and she has lost the nest. So she is making every attempt to recreate, going back to the tapes and to the videos and is going to recreate the nest as she so diligently had attempted to protect. So hopefully we'll get those soon. Uh, the chair notes that certification has been received regarding compliance with rules and application of proceeding. Those who got attention for it.
Thank you.
For the Treasury's report.
My report was passed out tonight, Madam President. Uh, the report is tomorrow on the debt taxes. The same two entities that were late last two weeks are still late, so they're another month late. We need to do something about that. And we have a total now of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy cents. This is pretty good.
Can you give the information to the law director about those that are late? And then, Safety Service Director's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First, the mayor wanted me to just, um, give a little thing out here. Do you want to let council know that I am in City Hall most days, but on a limited basis? If you need to see me, please call Genshu, make sure I will be available. Sorry, but I'm not up to my typical schedule, but look forward to getting back in the near future. I'd like to thank everyone who was kind enough to send me get low cards and all the thoughts and prayers. They have been well received. I would also wish, like to wish all the candidates good luck in the next election. And from the Safety Service, just a couple things. Um, Saturday, we are doing Make a Difference Day. Um, we will have dumpsters up at the pier, which they're already delivered. Those were dropped off, uh, for us by Republic Services. We are partnering with the, uh, Port Clinton City Schools. I'm gonna have some kids come down. Meet at the Jefferson Pier at nine o'clock, and we're gonna go clean up downtown, clean up the Waterworks area. If I have enough, we'll work our way through the beach area. So, anybody who has stuff, they will not take TVs, tires, car parts, freon, appliances, batteries, yard waste, and hazardous liquids. But everything else, you can drive up there on Saturday and drop it off up there. There will be people there. We will have city guys there too, to help with, uh, a loader to throw your stuff in and dump it in the, uh, trash. Um, but hopefully by the end of next week, um, Waylon looks paved and Sixth Street will have the finished coat of asphalt on. They are finishing up on Sixth right now, pouring all the driveways and approaches. The same thing on, uh, Taff Street. We've also started, you've probably seen even on Tenth Street, we've started Safe Route to Schools, beforeing the sidewalks all around. There are a few trees we have to trim back yet and a couple of things to move. I have a couple of utility poles that have to be moved yet. That's coming along, so that's probably gonna go a little longer than the other ones. It'll probably be mid to, eh, the twentieth range of, uh, November for the Safe Route to School project. But the other two, you should start seeing the blacktop and moving forward with that. Um, another thing, I just want to let everybody know, we took the docks out today. So the city docks are taken out. They're on, uh, there. We'll put some, uh, cones and stuff around them. But, uh, please, help out your neighbors too. I just Make a Difference Day, we wanna try to clean up and bring up. If somebody needs help, let me know. I'll probably run around and pick up truck. I can run to someone's house and throw stuff in for them if they need to, if they don't. So, let's everybody help out and get everything cleaned up. Thank you, Madam President.
Under correspondence, this evening I have the Finance Committee report of ten fifteen, the Parks, Recreation and Cemetery Report of ten eight, the Infrastructure Committee reports of August sixth, September thirteenth, September third, and August and October first, and the Treasury's report ending nine thirty thirteen. Um, can I have a motion to accept the correspondence as stated? Um, Madam President, you should also have the October first pen development committee minutes. They were sent out, um, a week, so you don't have to. I believe right to. Okay, did you send those to me in two, please? Okay. So planning and development of October first. Um, the motion to accept correspondence as stated. Thank you. I'll shut up. Thank you. All is in favor?
Aye, aye.
And I'll go to readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have no further second readings. Um, with the board please read by title and summary for the first time, ordinance thirty-six dash thirteen. Ornance thirty-six dash thirteen, an ordinance adopting and approving the personal policy and procedure manual of the City of Port Clinton and declaring an emergency. This council was taking action this evening on ordinance thirty-six dash thirteen. Seeing that, we will move that to the November twelfth meeting for a second reading. How quickly you've gotten here. Well, I'll go to business from the floor, Mr. Hatfield.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just wondered if, uh, if the other council members and administration are getting these postcards. Uh, I'd like to leave one of them. Councilman Mark Kappeler, I am writing in support of development at Waterworks Park. We enjoy substantial stream of visitors that we must capitalize on in order to make downtown Port Clinton a genuine destination. We possess an appealing water front, and Washington Properties stands ready to partner us. I urge you to sell a portion of Waterworks Park to development by Washington Properties. They have a history of working with a variety of other municipalities. They have very favorable results. This important and exciting initiative is what Port Clinton residents continue to desire. Thank you so much for your time. Um, has there been a new drawing or is there that we don't know about? I mean, I, the line here says, "I urge you to sell a portion of Washington, of, uh, Waterworks Park to development by Washington Properties." Has there been anything new?
No.
Because I just wondered about this. I'm not sure who's putting these out. Um, I've got about twenty-two of them right now, but they're mostly, uh, and a lot of them are duplicates and triplicates and, uh, four coming from one address. Um, and I thought it was interesting because aside from going door to door, uh, one house in particular that's in favor of this development set the face in a new draw, uh, drawing from, uh, from a former Washington Properties Development group, and it featured a, a large boardwalk with, uh, shops and stores. And so I was kinda curious because I hadn't seen that drawn.
You have not, you have not, not with them for almost a year? Yeah.
Okay. All right. Because I, I just, I'm just kinda curious.
And we've held off because of the mayor. I mean, I know that David Sangree has not moved on. But we have not.
Okay. But just, just seeing kinda some of the language there. Um, the only thing, other thing I have then is, everyone make sure you vote, whoever picked. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Ackerman?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Um, first off, I'd like to start off by thanking the Port Clinton Police Department and the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department, as well as the City School District for providing Alice training for, uh, prior school staff, uh, yesterday during the In-Service Day. It was a quite educational experience. If you get to go to a seminar or, uh, any informational session on Alice training, it is quite an intense and informative experience. Um, October twenty-eighth, the President's Secretary will be holding their monthly meeting at I R U P Library. That'll be at six thirty. Uh, November fourth, the Friends of the Park are meeting at St. Thomas Church at four thirty. As Councilman Kappeler already stated, November fifth, please, uh, remember to get out and vote. Um, as everybody who comes to these meetings regularly knows, it's an excellent way to express your satisfaction or dissatisfaction with your elected official. Um, please rely upon your ability to make a choice about who you would have represented. I encourage you all to do that. Whether you vote for me or against me, it's your right. Please use it. And, um, on November twelfth, the Parks, Recreation and Cemetery Meeting, which is scheduled, will still be held at six thirty. And, uh, belated happy anniversary for my wife from October nineteenth, seventeen years.
Yes. Linda, I just wanted to clarify something. Um, we had, uh, in a, in a chain of emails, um, we had received something, um, that, uh, was sent, uh, by Jen to, um, the mayor, to you, and David Sangree, um, that referred to, um, a meeting on Monday that focused on general items regarding the Washington Properties project. Was, was that a meeting of the administration? Man, his friends here says, no. Didn't have a meeting on Monday. Um, it, well, the, the date of the email is October third, so it would've been, I guess, I guess it would've been the very end of September that the meeting holiday occurred too.
I really can't, I'll, I'll look in my calendar, definitely tell you when the last night was.
Okay. Because this just says that there was, um, because when we met, it was just a general meeting. Okay. Okay. Well, that's basically what she's saying. There's, that there was general, um, discussion regarding the scope of the projects and, um, tax incentives and timing and obligation that developer versus city considering, uh, considering infrastructure cost, um, and building.
We didn't have that meeting.
Okay. Okay. That's what I'm referring to.
And there was nothing, there was nothing decided. It was Mr. Rose giving his information. We have not come back with anything on our side.
Okay.
And we were not just horny in our new training meeting. Um, that was a request from the mayor that we, the group of us meet and say, here's what the city wants, and here's what the city can, or here's what the city wants to do from our perspective.
Okay.
So, we had simply, at this last meeting, had simply let Mr. Rose speak, um, essentially did not comment.
Okay. But he didn't provide any additional information on the specifics of the project?
No.
So, no estimates on building dimensions or estimates on?
No, because he's waiting for the, um, geo-study to be done because the geo-study will tell him off high. He can go. On what the, on what the land mass will hold. Because if it, if it comes bad and says we can't go any higher than one story, you know, that's gonna change his scope of things. Or if it says he can go five stories, we wouldn't allow that, but, I mean, that's what that geo-study's for.
Is there an estimate on when that study's gonna be completed?
The mayor said this morning, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Part of it was government shutdown because it's an EPA issue. Um, so, because the government shutdown, it delayed it. He expects it to be done in two weeks.
Well, um, now that you are beginning discussions with Washington Properties, um, it seems like the time's come for council to express its wishes regarding disposition of the Waterworks Park property, so that both parties can, um, have information from council at the earliest possible time in the process. And Mr. Rose said during both his February and August presentations that he's open to discussing leasing the land. Um, and as you know, from the September Planning and Development Committee minutes that were approved at the last meeting, the text from the motion that I distributed to everyone at the August twenty-seventh meeting was discussed with Mr. Willer and by the committee. Um, from my perspective, the issue of whether to sell or lease the property was discussed addressed by Mr. Alexander, the retired Perrisburg administrator and attorney, who said when he spoke to it, that the rule of thumb for protecting city interest in these situations is that a city should lease land for development when it considers the land to be the valuable asset for the long term. In my mind, there's no doubt that the Waterworks Park property is, um, and will continue to be one of the most valuable assets that the city has. And so, I believe that council should protect and preserve the property for its current citizens as well as for future generations. Um, and I realize it's been a while since I can adopt this motion, so I have copies for everyone to send around, vote against tonight.
Before you, if I could just say something before you make the motion. I would prefer, at this point, that we wait until we have a definite say from Mr. Rose exactly what he's coming to do or wants to do. So we can bring that to you guys, and then you can have the motion saying, don't sell, don't lease, don't, like, I don't, and then, and then there are so many other fractions that fit into this, that you let us come back and give you a full picture. And then have you say, this isn't what it is. Instead of shutting the door on things before there's a plan on the table, let us get an opportunity to give you a plan, bring it to you, and have you say, no. Or yes. Or this is fine. Or, um, we want some more information on this before we make a final decision. We want to know what the cost to the city's gonna be. We want to know, um, what the cost is gonna end up being to the, to the citizens, what's gonna be the cost to the, to the park. Um, I think, I think that's the best way to do that for council. Because in the end, we're not, and we can't do anything without council's vote. You will have that, you will have that final decision. So, I feel like I'm superseding the process by shutting the doors on some things, instead of allowing him to bring back the whole project. And there are some things that our committees already talked about that we would think will financially beneficial to the city, both working on some of those numbers. So, I guess I'm asking for your trust, that you would think that we would do the best for the city, bring you to the table, the best deal, and have you guys fine tune that. Instead of shutting doors beforehand, let's get the options and then say yes or no. So that would, that would be my appeal to you. As we're, as we're talking to Mr. Rose, let's, and I would ask who does a benefit of it when he comes in. Let them bring the plan. Let us bring it to you. And, and in fact, when we're ready to bring it to you, there is no objections to having him here, Mr. Sangree here, and have a big meeting on how we think this is gonna impact the city. And then for the city to, for you guys to make the vote. I think, I think that's the fair, I think that's the fair way to do it. I think, I think you guys will get more information if we do things for it.
Sure.
Does somebody else have a kind of, don't have a floor?
This, uh, redevelopment plan for two thousand five, is that going on by council?
That would be taxing my memory. And I'm guessing that was at least presented to council.
Because the number one, the number one criteria is that the city will maintain ownership of the property. The city has been in public ownership for over a century. When you transfer ownership to the private sector, it's difficult, it's a mess, this arrangement to develop developers can be established before the term. Obviously, there was a lot of work that was put into this back in two thousand five, and if this redevelopment plan has already been approved by council, then which will change the effect? Unless we change, unless we change.
Council can vote on anything and change it, would.
Yeah. I mean, that's my, my opinion right now, in that compartment of people that you, you have in your favor, certainly, not to your right. I think the developer should know upfront how council deals. I mean, that would be, if I were to invest in time and money and effort in this, I'd wanna know what council's thinking. I mean, if, if my desire is to buy the property and council's not gonna sell it, I think I'd wanna do that. That's my view.
Well, to me, on this particular issue, it's not closing anything up for council to express the position, um, upfront. Um, as Mark said, um, it's council saying where we're at on this issue today, and also where the city has previously been at. Because the two thousand six request for proposals also said that the city intends to maintain ownership of the development property and instead provide long-term lease arrangements. Um, and so, I don't think this is closing anything off. Mr. Rose did say that he was open to negotiating, um, a lease, um, and if he's changed his mind on that, then obviously, when you bring the plan back to council, he can say so. He can say that that discussion's gonna work out.
That's true. I'm just, I'm just trying to make my job.
But I just feel there's a lot of people out there who have, um, expressed that the city's position on this continues to be, uh, to lease the land, and I feel like council is doing disservice to them if we don't give the administration some guidance on this. Because Mr. Willer was very clear that it is, um, council that determines, um, the disposition of progress. So, um, I, I feel that, and that council can set a development framework, and so I feel it's in, this is in the spirit of setting that framework, um, that it doesn't necessarily say that people can't change their minds later after being given more information, but this is our position today, and that that's valuable information too. And so, um, I, I guess, um, I'll go ahead and make the motion, just to have it out there on the table, and that's about it. And we just discussed a lot. Um, the motion is to limit the manner in which any transfer of Waterworks Park property may occur to include only lease options, meaning only rights related to possession and use, not ownership, may be negotiated. In no event may negotiations result in a sale of the Waterworks Park property, either in form or effect. Ownership of the Waterworks Park property and all of the rights related thereto are to be retained by the city during and after any lease term or terms.
I have a motion on the floor, as stated by Ms. Benko, do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam President.
To Mr. Hatfield. Any discussion? The board please call the roll. Ron Ackerman?
No.
Kathy Mel?
Yes.
Nicole DeFrias?
No.
Margaret Phillips?
No.
Mark Kappeler?
Yes.
Deborah Benko?
Yes.
You have to call in. Oh. Linda Franklin?
No.
I do have a couple of other things. Um, one is I realize that the mayor's up here, but if he's dead, Linda, I did wanna request, um, since we are going to be meeting with Mr. Rose again, um, that council receive a briefing on each, um, Washington Properties discussion meeting to include the date, names of attendees, and topics of discussion. Since we are only in discussions in that negotiation, so I'm assuming that council and public can be fully informed on what's being discussed.
And I will tell you that we do not have a date, so. Okay.
Um, and then, I, um, need to announce that the November fifth Planning and Development Committee meeting is canceled due to the election, um, so please exercise your right to vote. Um, and the Planning and Development Committee meeting is rescheduled for Thursday, November seventh at five thirty for the purpose of discussing the revolving loan fund, CRA, um, and development framework discussion. Um, I should mention particularly that Cole, Kat Field, and I had the opportunity to meet and speak briefly with the Board of Education at their meeting last night, um, simply to give them the heads up about the depth that, um, the city had been discussing CRA, and Cole provided here a nice information packet to them so that they were aware that, um, that the community had been discussing this, and that Cole's been doing, uh, research, um, at the state level on how the city could implement a CRA, a community reinvestment area, to help foster the improvement of that. And that's all I have to make, Madam President.
Would you want the previous meeting dates?
Um, if you have, then that would surprise.
Linda, just to get details on when it was upcoming.
Now, I guess I'd just like to say a couple bits on this Waterworks Park first. Um, I, I've heard a lot of people would say, well, you're not for development, and I ran for development, but I, I'm in development. And I think that just because a person is voting one way on this, um, I mean, I just have heard from too many constituents, they didn't wanna sell the land. And, um, I think it has been our property for a hundred years, like, all along. Um, so that's, that's the reason that I voted that way, is one, it's just, I wanna sell the land. And even though we've got some of these cards, um, really, when you think of it, I got twenty-two cards, and several of them, like Mark said, are from the same household, so I'm not really sure if people did, maybe they've read the cards, they do wanna sell the land, I'm not real sure, but, um, my people got, I mean, all that I've talked to and the people that we surveyed, they're not constantly there. So, that's the reason that I voted that way. Now, I just wanna say that, um, I wanna thank Tracy and the staff for, and I'm a member of the Prince of Park, I work on that committee, and I just wanted to tell Tracy and the staff that a great job they did, putting the post and the chain and all that, that they had a chance to look at the Prince of Park. I think it looks really good. And, um, so thanks, because it was a really hard job, and they did a great job. Um, also, I wanna mention that Saturday, we cleaned up the community garden. Um, we've been working on the community garden, but it's time to clean up, so if you have any extra people Saturday, woo-hoo! No, we have a group that are coming over, and, um, we may need, uh, some trash off wax, or something. If I was in there.
I will, I will.
And we'll be there from nine on until we get over. And that's all I have.
Ms. DeFrias?
Yes. Wanted to announce that the November fifth infrastructure meeting is also canceled due to Election Day, and I encourage everybody to get out and vote. And, uh, Ms. Phillips?
Regarding voting, uh, this school has a levy up, and I don't think people understand that it's a levy for things used in the building, it is not to cover the costs of the buildings themselves. That is a bond issue. A bond issue covers the buildings, levies cover what's inside. The one that is up for a renewal, started out like in nineteen seventy-four or something like that, and with the rollbacks of all the years and all the things that happened, it's no longer that, but it's now a half a mil, which means it's probably worth a person whose house is appraised at about a hundred thousand dollars, something like twenty dollars. It, this is not an expensive levy, so it's well worth continuing if that's in your mind. I also asked about the prices of the buildings themselves that were put up, because that got lost in the shuffle lately. Because of the fact that it was passed here as a bond issue, and we were able to get the buildings put up, and other districts could not afford it, and could not get the stimulus money, we are going to pay off these buildings six years sooner than what they planned. That information comes from Jeff Dornbusch, who is the treasurer of Port Clinton City Schools. So, you know, you don't have to worry about this school levy when you do go vote in two weeks from today, really. And that's all I have to, thank you.
Members of the audience. Mr. Yonky?
Jerry Yonky, one seventeen Cedar Street. Uh, Mr. Hatfield, when we had Fuller in here to start up a project, he had a special expense account for the city, you know, the city's expense account. Do we have one set up for Mike Rose?
No.
So how is the expenses handled, you know, for taking them out? So how is the expenses handled, you know, for taking them out to dinner and different things like that?
Currently, there are no expenses associated with any discussion. As the President Parlock stated, we've had two discussionary meetings. Those have been both held here at City Hall, so there's been no expenses associated.
Okay, now, how, that, so that appraisal, property appraisal, what account did that fit into?
That was, and if you look in the general fund line items under the administrative fund, there is a line item that was allocated a year before my time for Water Park, Waterworks Park development and redevelopment development. So there's been a line item established for several years.
Good, thank you. I also have a statement for Mark about what I understand is going on around town is Jeff Morgan zoning up to the fact that he's the Team Rose in Port Clinton, him and a guy named Greg Trick. And I'd make, those, that information that you have with those cards might be coming from that organization. Don't know, Brian. Thank you.
And we'll let you know that Jeff Morgan and Greg Trick attend meetings with Mr. Rose.
Okay.
They are employed by Mr. Rose and his company.
Okay, so that's where they get the Team, Team Rose?
I don't know. I haven't heard them called that. They don't call themselves that when they come to our meetings, but...
Yeah. All right. Well, maybe we'll call them the cheerleaders of Mr. Rose.
But I know that they're representing, representing him here.
Yeah, okay. And, and Morgan is a realtor also, isn't he? And Greg Trick is a project manager for a construction firm. And Morgan sits on the planning and zoning board, which might be a conflict of interest. Yeah, you said, "Trust me."
Trust me? You've known me a long time, Jerry, I've never failed you.
We heard "trust me" from Mayor Leon back when he was running for election, when he brought up Waterworks Park.
I'm not the mayor. You're not, I'm not the mayor.
You gotta, you gotta watch how you use that word, "trust me." Especially if being a government official. And also, I have a question.
You know, some days Jerry can really offend me, but let's move on.
Well, don't worry about it. You know, if you got offended by that, you don't get around much.
No. Only them two.
Yeah, right. But now, with the buildings downtown, is, do we have anything that, under urban renewal that would take care of fixing them up or having them torn down or anything like that? Does that come under revitalization plan?
I'm not sure if we have a program, but it's under revitalization plan.
Do what?
Pogomire's working on a plan. There's a steering committee. You know, I know they're going to be looking at different grant options, and it's not going to stop that plan.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Chad High School, 101 Wall Street. What year was it voted on to do something to the Waterworks Park? It was voted on and was passed to go into it. What happened to that? Why was it stopped? It was voted on once, why is it bringing up now? Does it?
It was voted to treat, it was voted, it was voted by the public to rezonate.
Yeah, that's right. Fighting for the same thing now again? It was already passed before and that? No?
Well, the rezoning just allows commercial development on there.
Because it was written in the paper by, by Locken Zeiss about when he was mayor, how that was starting. That's the reason I wrote that out.
Anyone else this evening?
Vicki Clemmons, 330 East Perry Street. It, it seems that you are keeping the sale of the property in your resources, I guess. So, if, if that's the case, how, how do you get around the state of Ohio law says that you have to have a bidding process for public property?
I just said, "Don't close any doors."
Don't close the door on the sale.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Philabon?
Yeah, Gary Philabon, 121 Wall Street. This is to Mr. Ackerman. The meeting when they took the vote for the Waterworks Park, he made a long story there about how hard he used to play ball and stuff down in Cleveland where it was drum and everything, and he was all for parks and everything.
I appreciate that.
But what don't make sense to me, you made a comment that all the Waterworks Park was, was a parking lot for Jet Express. That is not true. There was never no cars over in the Waterworks Park. The city owned that pier along there, and they put a, the city decided to put a thing, a toll booth up there that collect money for the city. That wasn't for the, for nothing to do with Jet Express. So I don't think that comment was very appropriate when you said the Waterworks Park was always a parking lot for Jet Express, because I'd never seen no cars over in that parking lot that was over the Jet Express. Because I lived here all my life, and I know what was going on in there. All right? Because I have a, I still got my mint of a pier pass.
That's a good point. I appreciate that, Gary. Ah, you know for a fact that when I have friends who drove in from Cleveland and we parked to go on the Jet Express, we did use that parking lot. So, it was partially a parking lot where you would pay the city to go ride the Jet Express. So, I'm not saying that's all the parking lots were. Obviously, you can still park there and go to the baseball field, park there and look at the water, park there and walk around the park.
Right.
So thank you for broadening my viewpoint. I appreciate that.
But I don't see why you say that you would want to vote for the developing of the park when that'd be just like when you were the kid down in Cleveland. What would you have said if somebody would've come down there and said, "Well, we're going to take your park away, we're going to develop it." You ain't going to have the park no more. I mean, that wouldn't, that's the only decent property that we, the city of Port Clinton has got. I don't see why they never put in for grants like other towns have, to get grants to help develop that property into a park, not into, when we voted for the development, we didn't say we had to develop it as for an enterprise for the city to make money off of it. We voted that it would be converted over into a park or make it into a park, put grants and put stuff out there and make it into a park. There's a lot of things they could do to that park, but they don't want to do nothing with it. They just want to let it, let it sit there and go to waste. And that's what they can say, "Look at what a sore eye it is." No, if you put trees out there, public restroom, maybe an amphitheater off to the side or something like that, to help draw people in, sure, that would work. But, no, everybody's looking at dollars. That's all they care about is money, money. Money's going to be the downfall.
Mrs. Bofe, you have a...
Yes. Our Bofe Westest Street. Where is the law that says you can sell city property?
I don't know. Right now, nobody's selling anything.
Well, it's up to the way it sounds. And doesn't the pier belong to the Buffalo Engineers? They're the ones that put it in to divert the river. Someday I'll wake up, they sell us courthouse after lunch.
Anybody else this evening? You've already spoken. Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Have this evening...
Not discrimination.
Yeah, Roger Smith, 218 West 4th Street.
It is not, Gary, excuse me. I have the right to call on people as I see fit. You've already spoken, there are other people who have not spoken. If other people speak tonight and get done, I will come back to you.
Okay. All right. I rose a, a couple of weeks ago at a city council meeting about the outside dining and liquor that is being served in Port Clinton with the permits. And I thank President City Council for giving me the ordinance that deals with that, plus George Welber. The concern that I have is the talk that I've done with a lot of individuals, there are probably another two restaurants that will be put in maybe for the permits for next year. With these permits that are going in, we're putting up permanent fencing that goes into our public sidewalk. Is there not a concern by city council that this is public access, public walkway, and we're turning it into a part of the restaurant itself, without any fees or anything coming to the city of Port Clinton for using that space? Now, we already have four, and there's a possibility of two more, and I, I heard there might be another one that's going to put in for this, this ordinance that we have. Where this started with me was last spring when the permanent fence went up at McCarthy's. I then went to Tariq Coulson and I also went to Johnson, the fire chief, about putting in a extra gate at the far end of the fencing. Because I felt there were 60-some people that would be dining in that area, possibly more, with maybe 100 or so people inside the restaurant. And my concern was that the exit, there is only one exit at the far end. According to your ordinance, it said, "Outdoor restaurants shall not obstruct emergency exits." I did contact city, the city of Columbus and the fire chief in Columbus, state fire chief. And the discussion that I had with him, he did consider that a corralled area, where we have to have that open to exit. And the statement that I got from Coulson and Mr. Johnson, our fire chief, "If I have a problem with it, go over the fence." Now, I thought that was a very unprofessional statement, going over the fence. How does a handicapped person get out of there? So if we put in more fencing in our downtown area, I would really like them to, to look at the fire exits, how they come out of there, and the amount of people in the building leaving the building. Because one fire exit at McCarthy's there, I don't think would do it. Island houses already have fire problems. We would hate to lose life in the city of Port Clinton because we didn't really look at this. Thank you.
Excuse me, you said that I said that to you about go over the fence?
Yes, you did. Not only you and Mr....
I don't think that came out of my mouth, but we'll...
Yes, it did. We stood right there, right there at the end. I brought it up to you in the spring. We sat right there and I had Johnson and you standing there.
Those words never came out of my mouth, but I'll just, you go ahead and say how you want to.
Yes, it did. Because even the mayor brought up the same thing. So all three of you had your ducks in a row.
Okay.
But now, since this is coming up, if we would've discussed this in the spring about just putting an exit in there, everything would've been cool. And I am not against outside dining. I do think Port Clinton should look at maybe getting a, some money for this, using a public space, and as if. But the safety part of it, yes, you did.
Okay.
Anyone else this evening? Tracy?
I just wanted to clarify something. It was mentioned that Mr. Morgan and Mr. Trick are working with Rose. Did you say the word employee?
I maybe shouldn't have used that word. I don't know if he's paying them or not. I'm sorry, Ms. Tracy, I should have been...
Thank you.
Whatever. Mr. Philabon?
Yeah, Gary Philabon, 121 Wall Street. One of the other questions I was going to ask is, if they would lease the property, what happens at the end of the lease? Say if it's a 20-year lease or a 40-year lease, what happens at the end of the lease then, if the city decides not to release the property to them people? What happens to all the people there? Then what, do you tear the building down? Or the people don't want to re, don't want to renew the lease? What would happen then? Because when you lease something, you only, it's just like if you lease a car, at the end of your lease, you turn your car in. Well, what are they going to do? Turn the buildings in? Say if they don't want them anymore? Then we've got some empty buildings sitting out there.
Anyone else this evening? Seeing no other comments, I'll ask for motion to adjourn Mr. Benko.
I have a question, I move this council chair.
Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Bofe. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. It's your turn.